Good afternoon. The Committee on Health and Human Services, Health Insurance Reform, Economic Development, and Senior Citizen now convenes this public hearing. Public hearing notices were given to the media, a first notice on Thursday, May 15, 2014, and a second notice on Monday, May 19. For the record, today is Thursday, May 22. The time is 2:05 PM. The committee will hear and accept testimonies, both oral and written, on Bill 335-32, an Act to Extend the Timeline for Obtaining Exemptions and Exceptions for Social Work Licenseur by Amending Subsections 122317 and 122318 of Article 23, Chapter 12, Part 2, Title X Guam Code Annotated. I'd like to recognize the presence of the Vice Chair of the Committee, Senator Tony Adah, and Senator Frank Uggan Jr. Thank you very much for joining me this afternoon. For those who wish to testify, provide written or oral, ask you to please just sign in if you haven't already. I'd like to call up to testify Mr. Craig Burns, Ms. Ovita Perez, Sarah Titano, Deanna Kumiyama. I think we can fit everyone, right? Christine Baez, and Shirley Antalan. And Gaudencia, yes, please. You want to have the board represented, right? Great. Thank you very much for being here this afternoon. Just briefly, Bill 335 is a measure to extend the timeline for obtaining exemptions and exceptions for social work licensure. As you know, that we passed a law previously in the last term to put this board together, to put the process together to get social work licensure. And so the problem we had was that the nominations and the subsequent confirmations didn't happen until, you know, way past the timeline that we had all wished that it would happen. And so what that did now was push the date and the requirements needed for the board to come together and entertain any applications that come in for exemption and exceptions, right? And we know that in the government of Guam alone, it affects about 200 social workers. And so in the private sector as well, I'm sure that it's going to have an impact. So we want to be able to -- we heard, we met with the board. They've met for the first time about two weeks ago. And so we heard this is a concern for them. They wanted more time. The original law says they have 18 months, I believe. However, they weren't, they're only in panel, first meeting was two weeks ago. So they need that timeline. So what this bill does is set that timeline for people to come in and apply for these exemptions. So now I'll have the Chairman of the, Chairperson of the Social Work Board, Ms. Gaudencia Burns, to open up.
N S, um, sorry, Gaudencia Palomo Burns. And I actually have a written statement that I would like to read. And I really appreciate your time, and I truly appreciate you doing this really fast, you know, because we came over to you and for your assistance, for your help, in this critical deadline, and within a few hours, you were able to help us. So thank you. I'm a little nervous. I don't like to talk in front of people.
Don't worry, Mr. Burns is right there. He's got your back.
That makes it worse. So Chairman and Committee, thank you so much. Thank you for the opportunity to testify in support of Bill 335-2, an Act to Extend the Timeline for Obtaining Exemptions and Exceptions for Social Work Licenseur. My name is Gaudencia Palomo, and as a Chairperson of the Guam Social Work, as a Chairperson of the Guam Social Work Licensing Board and a current social worker, I strongly support this bill. I support this bill for the following reasons. To continue to support implementation of the Social Work Practice Act, Chapter 12, Part 2 of Title X Guam's Annotated Code, it is in the best interest of the public and the social work profession to extend the period for exemptions and exceptions and an additional 18 months. The law was signed on December 10, 2012, and the initial 12-month period to authorize exception and exemptions will expire June 10, 2014. The importance of this date and the importance of the exceptions and assumptions is it is the day by which all individuals currently practicing social work and who either do not have a social work degree or have a social work degree from a non-accredited social work program must comply with the law. It's a deadline for non-BSW and MSW unaccredited to comply with the law. The exception exemption clause will allow the board to license all non-BSW/MSW degree holders in order that they can continue in their present position and remain in compliance with the law. However, it was not until January 2014 that Guam Social Work Board finally had enough members for a quorum, and the board first meeting was held until, was not held until May 6, 2014. It was then in the board received final clarification that all non-BSW, Bachelor of Social Work, Master of Social Work, need to comply with the law. June 10, 2014 is only a few days away, and it is unrealistic, even impossible, to comply with these requirements as outlined in the original law. I'm here to express my support as a Chairperson of the Social Work Licensing Board to extend the timeline an additional 18 months to allow the board to truly work on the rules and regulations, application process, and all matters essential to ensure appropriate, effective, and timely implementation of this law. Almost done, okay? It is important that we do this right to protect the public, the consumers, the clients, and patients we work with, and to protect the integrity of our profession. There are currently as many as 300 individuals who are practicing as social workers, and it will fall under the exemption, I'm sorry, and will fall under exemption exception clause we're talking about. If we are not able to license these individuals, the majority of whom in the public sector and different agencies and numerous nonprofit organizations on the island, the vast majority of which serve the most vulnerable population in our community, we run the very real risk of losing this extremely valuable asset and removing a vital part of the safety net of our services these individuals provide for our community. So I, as a licensed social worker, I am here on Guam, and I truly believe that all these colleagues that are out there provide a vital service to the people of Guam, to Chamorah. So I would truly ask you to please consider extending this time to allow us to work very hard.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Ms. Perez, Ovi?
Small world. I just saw Senator Tony and Senator Uggis at the Systems of Care Conference, so thank you for being here. I had to rush down here, then I have to speed back up, so make it quick and drive safe. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony in support of Bill 335-32, an Act to Extend the Timeline for Obtaining Exemptions and Exceptions for Social Work Licenseur by Amending Subsections 122317 and 122318 of Article 23, Chapter 12, Part 2, Title X Guam Code Annotated. This extension will provide the Guam Social Work Board additional time to create and disseminate the required rules and regulations to conduct their mission of getting Guam social workers licensed, which would have otherwise expired on June 10, 2014. Guam, NASW Guam Chapter has been in existence since 1999 on Guam, and prior to that, we were known as Guam Social Work Association, which has been in existence on or about 1980. We were the organization that advocated to ensure that this legislation become a reality for social work practice on Guam. Our island, again, is the only jurisdiction within the United States and its territories that currently does not have the licensed social work professionals. Therefore, NASW Guam Chapter, we are really humbled that we are really, really close to achieving this milestone, not only for our profession, for the title protection of our profession, but most importantly, this legislation will provide a mechanism that will protect our consumers from unethical practices of the social worker providing them the services. NASW Guam Chapter would like to thank the Guam Social Work Board, and congratulations, Gaudencia, on being the Chair, for their continued hard work, dedication, and commitment in this very important mission of providing licensure to our social work community. Again, thank you for the opportunity, and be a social worker.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perez. Mr. Burns?
Okay. People that know me know that I tend to be a little verbose, so I'll try and keep it as short as I can.
Okay.
I'll read my statement, and then I'll submit my full thoughts electronically later.
Okay, great.
So, Mr. Chairman, Senator Adah, Senator Uggan, thank you for the opportunity to testify in favor of, in support of Bill 335-32. I am a licensed social worker here on Guam and currently employed at the Department of Veterans Affairs Home-Based Primary Care Program, but today I come not as a federal employee, but as a social work professional and a member of the community. In addition to the work I do with the elderly and homebound veterans, I'm a medical social worker for a local health services agency, adjunct faculty at the Myron B. Thompson School of Social Work at the University of Hawaii Manoa, and will be sworn in in July as the President-elect for the Guam Chapter of the National Association of Social Workers. So the passage of the Social Work Practice Act was a remarkable day for Guam and for the profession of social work in Guam, as Guam is the last territory, the last jurisdiction in the United States that hasn't had a licensing law regulating the profession of social work. And so why is this important? So just to give a little, really quick context, social work is one of what we call the helping professions, and so while motivations vary as to why individuals choose to enter social work, it most often comes down to a basic desire to help others. And so by its nature, social work focuses on serving the underserved, focuses on empowering those in need, and giving a voice to those who cannot raise their voices, similar to what you all do. So we're often not paid well, but we do it anyway. We're often demonized in the media, criticized, and we're rarely thanked for the work we do, even by the people who we're serving, but we do it anyway. Our motivations are creating a better community and a better island, not only for those with whom we work, but for all the people of Guam and beyond Guam. The work we do influences lives. It's important that an individual, a family, a village, and even the island as a whole is confident in knowing that the person with whom they're entrusting themselves, to whom they may be sharing their deepest, most intimate thoughts, that that individual is qualified to take care of them and to nurture their healing and recovery, to follow a code of ethics that places the safety and protection of the client, the patient, the consumer, and the community above all else. We license many professions, lawyers, doctors, nurses, there's even a cosmetology licensing board, I found out. Yet until the passage of this law, individuals who daily put themselves on the front lines of social empowerment and change to help those who cannot help themselves did not have anything that would let them assure their clients, yes, I'm qualified to do what I'm going to say I'm going to do. So Guam's unique in many ways, and the powerful and resilient spirit of the Chamorah people I work with and Guamanians has impressed me and amazed me since the day I landed in 2012. So as a social worker, a father, a veteran, and a member of the community, my family and I have made the decision to stay on Guam and make it our permanent home. And that's my personal motivation in wanting to see this profession, it's my profession, held properly accountable to our clients, our patients, our consumers. So again, why the law is important and why an extension to the exception and exemption clause is absolutely necessary, in my view. Others spoke on the definition, the law addresses what the exception and exemption entail in the context of the Social Work Practice Act. So the real-life implications of the clause are the important part. One of the ways that services have been provided is individuals without a social work degree or a degree, because Guam was not accredited until fairly recently for their social work program, have been able to practice social work. And without the licensing law, they've been able to do that and call themselves social workers. However, now that the licensing law is in place, they'll no longer be able to do that. And I'm getting off script, so I'm going to start going long if I don't get back on script. But they've been able to practice in those social work positions. So what the exception and exemption, which is unique to Guam, does is allow the board the latitude and the discretion to license those individuals so that they can comply with the law, they can comply with funding mandates from federal or whatever other sources are receiving funding that requires a certain criteria and a certain qualification of the individuals providing those services. So the real-life impact is that those up to 300 social workers that are in public health, Catholic Social Service, CPS, APS, many, many, many agencies in the community risk losing their jobs. And beyond the immediate impact that it would have on them, losing their livelihood, it would have an impact on all the individuals they'd no longer be able to serve. And as I mentioned earlier, the individuals that we serve tend to be, almost without exception, those who are in need and the underserved individuals and populations. And additionally, the NASW, so what changed my mind about the whole thing when I read the law is that those who get the exception exemption, and Gaudencia is making the noise, you're going too long, the exception exemption, what changed my mind is they'll be required to sign a document complying with the NASW Code of Ethics and also be required to comply with the continuing education requirements that all other licensees will have to follow. And the NASW has worked with the national organization to find a way to get them full membership with the National Association of Social Workers so that they'll have access to the education benefits and continuing education credits and other things that other social workers have. So I'm going to skip to the end and just say that as a professional social worker and as a professional in general, it's of great importance to me that our profession of social work be recognized, licensed with the highest standards and expectations of performance of all of those that I call my colleagues, whether they have a social work degree or not. They share the same mission that I do. So I just ask you, please work to provide the board the time they need to do it right so that they can get it done right the first time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Deanna?
Hafiday Chairman and Senators, and welcome, Senator Morrison. My name is Deanna Kumiyama. I am the VP for the NASW Guam Chapter, and I am also one of the first graduates on Guam from the MSW program, from the Myron B. Thompson School of Social Work from the University of Hawaii at Manoa. And I sit here as the future. I testified when this bill first came, and I am testifying against, to support it. And as the professionals here speak, and I'm entering the arena of the profession, I speak on behalf of those who are just graduating from the program. The two senators were there today, and we have 14 more individuals entering the social work program. That means 14 more professionals who will be helping our most vulnerable and those that are most needy. I ask that this legislation body, and Mr. Chairman, that you humble to our requests in that you do this extension for us, in that what Mr. Burns said, we do this the right way. It's been a long time coming, and I know that there's a lot of people who have worked very, very, very hard for it, and we should not let it just go to waste. And I would like to verbally state that I commend the board, the Social Work Board, the Licensing Board, in their efforts in trying to pursue this and doing it correctly so that we, all our professions will be taken care of, and most importantly, our consumers and our clients, so that way they can look towards us and our profession and know that we are licensed. Sometimes the last is the best. We get to see everybody else and what they've done, and even though they were the last jurisdiction, US jurisdiction, to be licensed, I think at the same time, we have the best seat in the House because we can look at what's been done and what can, we can do to make things better, and what we can do particularly for the island of Guam. And so I humbly ask for your support, and I humbly ask that you allow this bill to pass, and that we allow the extension to take place so that way things can be done properly, not just for those who are currently sitting in their, in their positions, but for those who will be joining the workforce very, very soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Deanna, for your testimony. Is there anyone else that wishes to testify? Christine Baez and Shirley Antalan? You can just pull up another chair, it's okay. I want to recognize the other two board members, Mr. Solerio and Melissa. Ms. Targalov, thank you for being here as well.
Good afternoon, Senators.
Good afternoon.
Hi, my name is Christine Baez. I'm a National Association's treasurer, and I'm speaking on behalf of my, I'm in full support of the Bill 335-32. This would not just help me, but also my fellow colleagues that are working with Catholic Social Service, as what Craig Burns mentioned. We have a few workers at our department that doesn't have a social work degree, but they're practicing as a social worker, that this would help them also, the exception and exemption, not just for my fellow colleague, but for, also for other agencies. I'm also part of the person that pushed for the Social Work Practice Act, I'm part of the class of 2012, that lobbied for, to pursue the licensure on Guam. Basically, that's about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, ma'am, for your testimony. We also received a written testimony that was sent in by Doris Bukikosa from the Department of Education in support of the measure as well, as this would impact, if this timeline is not extended, would impact them in DOE as well. Before I open up the questions to, or if they have any questions to my colleague, I just want to say that, Mr. Burns, you hit it right, you know, you hit it right on target where you said the social workers, the things you guys do sometimes are thankless, it's a thankless job, but you, you do it, you continue to provide that care to our community. And earlier this morning, we were over at the pending, the pending ceremony, right, for the new graduates. And so I told them, I said, they're entering a profession where they're going to have you folks, the guy, you know, you, you ladies and gentlemen who have been in the profession, who have been doing this day in and day out. And so I told them, they're very lucky to have you there as their, you're the wisdom, you know, you'll be there to guide them. And so with this now, with the newly established licensure board, and with the great group of members you have there, I tell you, things are looking very good. And I remember, Deanna, you guys were here, you got all that nice sign that said, "Got licenseed." I was going to ask those students today, but it was so, you know, everyone was so formal, and it was so quiet, and, you know, Senator Uggan and I came late, so I couldn't joke around and ask them if they got license, right? But again, that's right. They're still trying, that's right, that's right. But thank you very much again. So I'll ask the Vice Chair, if there's any comments or questions.
Thank you, Non-Mister Chair, just thank you for coming out and bringing this to our attention so that we can, the Chairman took immediate action. And Mr. Burns, I keep seeing you look over to the missus there, and Noon went to cut it off, you got the signal really good, didn't you? That's social work at its best, you know? But no, thank you for bringing this to our attention, and hopefully we'll be able to, you know, get the Chairman to report this out and hopefully get it onto our next session. Thank you all for being here. Thank you for the work you do.
Senator Uggan?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And again, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to thank you very much for providing testimony and, once again, bringing this to the attention of the Chairman and also the legislature. Just a couple of questions in regards to the timeline. I heard a June 10, 2014, if in fact this is not enacted. I would not be too concerned about that. We haven't received any official confirmation in terms of when the next session is, but the Chairman can also insert language that it will be retroactive to a particular date so that, once it's enacted, it does not affect anyone. So if by any chance we do have session past the 10th of June, then certainly that language, Mr. Chairman, can be incorporated so that we address and allay some of the concerns of our social workers. Now, I guess my second question would be, looking at the proposed extension, is December 10, 2015, or 18 months from the date of enactment of this provision or the entire Act? Because the language, I think we need to be a bit more specific, whether, all of it reads the enactment of this Act, and I'm under the impression that the Act was passed in 2012. Was that 2012, Mr. Chairman? Yeah.
Yes, that's correct.
It may have to read, well, 2010, December 10, 2015 would be more applicable in this case, so at least you have those two options. It's just looking at whichever is later, 18 months, I think the 18 months may have already lapsed. So that's, I'm just, for purposes of clarity, making sure that there's this understanding that December 10, 2015 perhaps would be the appropriate deadline in terms of getting all the social workers to be in compliance with your licensure requirements. Now, looking at, in addition to the extension, have there been any other concerns? And I want to make sure that the Social Worker Licenseur Board has ample time to be able to review the entire process and some of the requirements, but are, do you anticipate any other challenges before December 10, 2015? Because, you know, perhaps six months on the road, you may realize that some of the requirements by law may require an additional timeline only because of when the certification, instruction, and training is offered. So I guess that, that's another question, and that's where my issue comes in, whether December 10, 2015 would be an appropriate timeline in terms of an additional year and a half, when in fact the courses or the training may only be offered once or twice in the next year and a half, and realistically, can all 300 go through that particular training?
The major issue right now is that we didn't have a quorum. Now we do. There's four of us. We're still waiting for a fifth board member. The four members that are right now for the board, they're fully committed to work with the rules and regulations, the application, and the fees. Now, the challenge with that is that we only can meet once a month, and if we need to meet more, we have to publicize it. And unfortunately, we don't have the money for that. So we have to rely on the newspaper to do it for free. So as we go along with our meetings, but we want to get things done, well, let me rephrase that, when I want to get things done faster, and let's get it done, yes, students, sort of tomorrow, I face a lot of blocks because it has to be done when we meet all as a quorum. So those are some of the challenges that I have to face and slow down and recognize that this needs to be an open forum. However, at this point, we're only allowed to meet once a month because we don't have the funds to publicize for more meetings.
Okay. I think you also, and I have an appreciation for that, and certainly I'm sure the Chairman is aware of that, and I hope that your condition, your situation would get better to the point where it allows you to meet at least a minimum twice a month, at least at the inception, when you're getting things going. Because there's something that you just mentioned about the formulation of rules and regs, and even the rules and regs has to go through the AAA process, the administrative adjudication process, and after you're done reviewing it, after you're done conducting your own public hearings, bringing that information before the public, the community, and then presenting it to this body, then 90 days has lapsed, then another, perhaps, 30, 60 days may have lapsed, and then we're down to less than a year, for all the social workers to come into compliance. So that's, I'm glad you brought that up, because at least now, the Chairman and members of this body would be tracking in terms of when, understanding when your rules and regs are formulated, and if there's a need to allow for that additional flexibility, then the members in this, on this panel would not the members in this, on this panel would not be surprised that we had to take into consideration the formulation of rules and regs before they can actually impose and implement some of the certification requirements. So, those are very critical factors, and I'm glad that at least you have your membership, even though you're waiting for one additional member. Hopefully, that individual will be appointed very soon and confirmed very shortly so that in fact we can move ahead and allow your association licensure board to be able to proceed because you provide a very critical service to our community, and I think that by virtue of not only having this hearing and the chairman moving forward very expeditiously on this measure, it does recognize the service that you provide our community. So, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Uggan. Senator Morrison?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank the panel for your testimony. I apologize for walking in the middle of your testimony, sir. Just to follow up with the Senator Uggan's line of questioning, I just wanted to also understand the, this date was, I guess, determined by the board and felt that this was ample time as far as the exemption?
Well, we talked about it, the board, and we were deciding what would be the best thing, so we were juggling a year, eighteen months, and as time goes by, we, you know, I think we came, when we met with Senator Rodriguez, we're like, okay, eighteen months, it feels like it would be a realistic time. We are very aware that we have to bring the rules and regulations to you. We also, we're very aware that we have to do that economic impact and the fee and bring it up to you for approval before we say this is going to be the cost of the application or any fees. So, we're aware that the time, we're in a time crunch. At the same time, we don't want it to go on and on and on for years and years and years, you know, and lose credibility or not take our profession seriously. So, we want to show that we're working together as a group to help the community, to help each other, and we, as the board, we have reached out to the NASW for some of assistance, for some of the people who initially submitted the, who created the law and everything, we have reached out to them for help. They are willing to help. So, we're working together, and we're really hoping that eighteen months will be enough, enough time, and let's just hope for the best, and when the bills come to you, then just push, 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 work, work, work.
I certainly wish you all the best with this timeline. I understand, you know, former director of Contractors Licensing Board and trying to update the rules and regs. I saw sometimes there's things that just threw a curveball at the process, and I do hope this timeline will work best and are in your favor, and we look forward to working with you. Thank you, Ms. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator. You know, you have a assistant AG working with you, right? With the board?
Correct.
Okay. So, I would suggest that you seek counsel from him because now, if you're only, you could only meet once a month now officially because you don't have the resources to publish. Even with that, we probably can look and see how we can assist you, but I think you can have working sessions, you know, and so I would encourage you to seek counsel to just make sure that you indeed could, because I know another board, you know, not a board, but the example is the Health Insurance Negotiating Team. You know, they've had working sessions because, you know, they're challenged with having a quorum, but nothing precludes you from having those so that work can still get done, you know?
Yes.
So, I would suggest you look at that so that things can just move along.
We have met several times outside. However, in the last meeting, our first official meeting, we were told that we can have working sessions, but we were very confused because two is considered a group, three, so we have to be very careful that there's, we have to clarify that with him.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Great. If there's nothing else, we'll deem that this bill has been publicly heard, and we'll wrap up the committee report and have it ready for the next session. Okay? Thank you very much for your time.
I just want to make a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Senator?
To just seek your assistance in getting the governor to appoint the fifth person. I mean, NASW has really been giving nominations and names of individuals that are ready and willing to work. So, if they're having trouble getting more names and nominees out there, then call us so that we can, you know, submit, and NASW can work with that. Because really, we knew at the time that it was, when we had it, when we were working to get this law passed, that there needs to be a timeline. And in terms of providing the rules and regulation, there, we are guided by the Association of Social Work Boards, so, and most of the information that we took from the law was taken right out, you know, quoted from and cited from the Association of Social Work Boards. So, with that in mind, hopefully, it won't take another eighteen months, hopefully, but because, you know, social workers, I waited thirty years. I know I'm celebrating my thirty-fifth year since I graduated from high school and shortly after that. But yeah, so, if you, you know, just to help to get that last person as a board member out, because even with the quorum, with four members and there's voting, there still needs to be a tiebreaker. Thank you.
Okay, so the committee will follow up on that as well. Thank you very much. I will ask the minority leader to use his poll. Okay, thank you. So, the time now is 2:41, and this hearing's adjourned. Thank you. Perry, can you use your poll?